I am going to reconvene the May 24th Planning Commission meeting. And Madam Secretary, can you do a roll call?
Please let the record show that all Planning Commissioners are present.
Okay, and then, moving on, will Vice Chair Donor please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you, Vice Chair Donor. Moving on to the review and approval of our May 10 minutes from our Planning Commission meeting, do I have any comments or a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Please take a vote. Yeah, you want to touch your screen, Danny, to get it to light up?
Oh, yes.
All right, that item passes 5-0. Public comments, do we have any public comments tonight?
No, Chair Nelson.
Great. And do we have anything to report back from closed session?
We do not have anything to report.
Great. Moves this on to the consent calendar, I don't see any items on the consent calendar, which has us at Item D, public hearings, coastal development permit, CDP 20-0010, for a 717 square foot addition and remodel to the main residence, and a 1,339 square foot addition, and new 519 square foot two-car garage for the guest house, and site improvements within the coastal density residential CRHD zone of the Dana Point specific plan located at 34312 Starboard Lantern. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, John Champa will provide a staff report tonight.
Good evening, Chair Nelson and Planning Commissioners. John Champa, I'm the case planner for the coastal development permit located at 34312 Starboard Lantern. The project is located within the Lantern Bay Estates community, which is in the coastal zone and within the Dana Point specific plan. The property is zoned coastal, high-density residential, and the community has been approved through an area plan, 80-6P, which specified specific development standards for each lot within the community. This is the subject property, as you can see, the existing conditions reflect the French manner architectural design. The main house is located on the left photo, and then on the right photo, you can somewhat see the pool house that's located behind the landscaping there. Quick summary of the project's scope includes a 717 square foot addition to the main residence, as well as some remodeling and reconfiguring of some of the rooms, as well as a 1,339 square foot addition and remodel to the pool house, as well as a two-car garage that would be located in at the street frontage of the property, as well as hardscape and landscape improvements, which would include a new pool to the site. Project is in conformance with all of the applicable development standards, including setbacks, height, and parking, as specified in the area plan. Here you can see the proposed site plan illustrating the proposed additions in the orange color. The represented here illustrates the designated setbacks for five feet for the side, as well as five feet for the garage. However, the living area is specified to provide 20-foot front yard setback. And then, the rear yard setback is actually established by the top of slope, which the project is not proposing to encroach beyond that. It should be noted that, as you can see here, divided down the center of the lot, the property is actually comprised of two lots. However, no, no portion of the residential units are located over the property line. The project's scope would include the construction of a new pool over that property line, and so staff has incorporated a draft condition for you for that consideration, which is as follows, that the applicant shall provide the city, shall provide the city draft language for an instrument to allow structures constructed over commonly-owned property lines such as a lot tie, easement, or other legal documentation for the improvements over separate parcels. A lot line adjustment may require an additional coastal development permit application for review and approval. Prior to recordation of any legal document for the purposes of a building over the property line, the applicant shall obtain city approval. This is to ensure that, prior to construction of the pool, that that lot tie be reviewed and approved by the city, as well as recorded. Just to give you a quick overview of the floor plans that are proposed, here, for the most part, the courtyard at the center of the main home is proposed to be filled in, which would allow for a dining area, as well as a small expansion to the kitchen and new front entry. For the pool house, would result in a new, or, sorry, a new garage, two-car garage, which would meet the required coast standards, as well as a new kitchen and bedroom. So it would function as a independent, single-family residence, however, given that it is on a separate lot, it would conform to the required standards. For the second floors, the main residence would result in primarily remodeling and reconfiguring of some of the floor plan, and for the pool house, it would result in a new second story. However, both of the proposed improvements do comply with the height requirements as previously stated. This is the new proposed architectural design of the structures, and as you can see, this is a slight change to the architectural style, and has been defined by the applicant as a traditional coastal design, which would be in keeping with the mix of architectural styles throughout the community. Project is in conformance with the requirements of the coastal development permit, given that the site is an existing developed property, and would not result in any impacts to public access or environmentally sensitive habitat areas, as well as would comply with the applicable development standards as previously stated. So with that, staff believes that the project is in conformance with the applicable development standards, and that is compliance with the certified local coastal program, as well as the area plan, and the necessary findings for the coastal development permit. So that concludes staff's presentation, staff and the applicant are available for any questions you may have.
Great, thank you, Mr. Champa. I'll go ahead and bring it back to the commission, do we have any commissioner questions? Vice Chair Donor.
The question in the, in this neighborhood before, we had a lot of controversy over top of slope, is that off the table at this point?
This is not an issue with that, with this application.
And is this, have the HOA approval?
So, the applicant has presented a proposal, and it's my understanding that the HOA has approved it, however, they haven't received the official documentation at this point, but it is anticipated to be received.
Thank you.
Anybody else, yeah, Commissioner Gabbard?
Thank you, just a couple things. Some cleanup stuff first, the grading plans don't show a driveway approach, and there's, so my assumption is, the pool house, garage, they're going to cut open that, cut open that curb and, and put a drive-in?
Yes, that is correct.
And secondly, they're taking out those four ficus trees in the front, but there's nothing in the landscaping plans that talks about any of the, any of the landscaping on the front. So, have, is there, has there been any discussion on what the front, the front yard is going to look like?
So, the applicant has put together really just a conceptual plan at this phase, the HOA is involved with a landscape design and review as well. Staff at this phase is just ensuring that it's in, in general compliance with the city's standards, and through the detailed plan review, staff will be ensuring that we have compliance with the city's standards, as well as any other provisions that would be necessary to ensure compliance with the approved plans.
And lastly, on the Condition 38, my assumption is, we're, we're just going to go with the lot tie, that it's not going to be an easement?
Correct, the lot tie is the easiest, most effective, and efficient way of allowing for a proposal such as this.
Okay, and the applicant's in agreement?
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the commission? No? All right, do we have any public, public speakers or testimony?
No, we do not.
Okay, so, open and close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission for a discussion. Anyone want to take the lead?
I think the project looks excellent, I think it's going to be an improvement for the community, so I'm fully supportive.
Go ahead and get your mic.
Just looking at the renderings, and looking at the pictures, and seeing what the potential is for this particular wonderful, wonderful platform for, for, for that area, I think it's, it's a great, it's great.
Commissioner Gabbard?
Yeah, I'm in agreement as well, I think that especially elevations are a welcome refresh for the property, and it's going to help enhance the, not only property value of the owners, but also the surrounding neighborhood, so I'm in support of that as well.
Great, yeah, and I will just echo my fellow commissioners' comments, I mean, the project clearly is consistent with ours, local coastal plan, it is, you know, well-designed, it's, it's changes that are good changes to the existing property, and it conforms to all the requirements of the Coastal Act, so I'm in full support and look for a motion from somebody if possible.
I move that we approve coastal development permit, CDP 200010, for a 1, 717 square foot addition and remodel to the main residence, and a 1,339 square foot addition, and a new 519 square foot two-car garage for the guest house, and site improvements within the coastal high-density residential CRHD zone of the Dana Point specific plan located at 34312 Starboard Lantern, with the additional condition of approval, and number 38. The applicant shall provide the city draft language for an instrument to allow structures constructed over common, commonly-owned property lines, such as a lot tie, easement, or other legal documentation for the improvements over separate parcels. A lot line adjustment may require an additional coastal development permit application for review and approval. Prior to the recordation of any legal document for the purposes of building over the property line, the applicant shall obtain city approval.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Thank you. Please vote. All right, that item passes 5-0, congratulations. Which takes us on to old business, under old business, we have, first item is short-term rental subcommittee, is there anything to discuss tonight?
There is not.
Okay, thank you. Which leads us to the next item, which is our 2021 to 2029 housing element update, is there a staff report?
Yes, there is, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Belinda Dynas to provide the staff report.
Thank you, Brenda, good evening, Chair Nelson and members of the Planning Commission, my name is Belinda Dynas, principal planner, and I'm pleased to introduce you once again to Mr. Colin Drucker from Placeworks, who is the city's consultant and lead project, project manager on the preparation of the city's housing element update. Colin is here to provide a presentation on the draft document and an overview of some of the proposed programs. City staff did receive written correspondence from the Kennedy Commission, which has been distributed to each of you, and with that, I would turn it over to Colin, thank you.
All right, thank you. So I'm back here, I've talked to you previously about kind of an overview of the housing needs and the, the land inventory, how the city can address the future housing needs. And the other big part of the housing element is the housing program side, what the city's planning to do in the future, you can go ahead and, so, here I'm going to quickly breeze through some of the things that you have accomplished over the last few years, go ahead and go next. So, the Silver Lantern project, source of pride and probably some consternation for not getting some of the credit you deserve, but it is a successful conversion of market-rate apartments into housing for those kind of at risk of persistent homelessness, those in 0% to 30% of the median income, so 17 units preserved in perpetuity, which means they are not going to be at risk, go ahead and next slide. The city's been helping to slash constraints and, and remove some of the obstacles in the, in the form of development fees, particularly there for ADA alterations or disabled veterans, but also for lower-income housing, whether or not an entire project or a portion of a project. Then there's the South Cove Town Homes, where you have 17 units, these are ownership units, so that's a lot harder to buy down, so moderate income, which in Orange County is, is still a kind of a good working wage in many cases, preserved again in perpetuity, and conditioned there with the Coastal Mellow Act. And then, something that's pending, and I guess, as always, if this changes, we'll update it, but we're planning on this moving forward, and there'd be 15% of the units reserved, 10% for lower, and 5% for moderate. And then, in the Doheny Village effort, also pending, looking at offering an incentive to offer more density, because these are housing element sites, where you're going to incentivize the development of 50% of the area is residential by offering a, a pretty substantial local density bonus in advance of any state density bonus being offered. So this is if somebody wants to go, oh, that's okay, you can, if somebody wants to use it, they can. And then, the city has been hard at work with its homeless task force, and we, we got some input at the public workshop, talking about some greater clarity on some of these numbers, but there was some support for the efforts that the city has been doing and will continue to do. So, I'm going to give you an overview of the outreach we've, we've done to date, so there was related outreach, housing kind of an ongoing discussion in, in many jurisdictions, the, the city is part of the county's efforts to coordinate federal funding that goes towards housing programs, and so, there was outreach done in October and November of 2019, where we still obtained that input of people who might live or work in Dana Point, and we factor that in. If you go back one, I think. Yeah, so then, there's the, you've seen this before, but this is just reminding you of the stakeholder engagement we've done, so whether it's fair housing, affordable housing, special needs groups, or even just looking at the market-rate housing specifically there, seeing how we can cut constraints and make more development feasible for everyone, because as all affordable, as all housing gets more affordable, everyone benefits. And then, the, this is a list of the efforts we've been doing in 2021, so I've been coming to you, the city talked to the youth board workshop, we had a survey, and, and both of those efforts resulted in some input that I'll share in a little bit. And then, we had a virtual public workshop just last week, and the city is conducting a pop-up workshop to talk about Doheny Village and housing and safety amongst other things. And then, we're here tonight, and then we're going to city council in mid-June, in order to get their general take on where the housing element should go. So this is the, the survey that we've done so far, almost everybody has, lives in Dana Point, there is a small portion of people who work in Dana Point but live elsewhere, and we're happy to see that we got about 24 individuals who responded, who also happened to wear the hats of providing services in some form or fashion related to housing, or those who need housing assistance. And generally, what we've taken from them, because it's, you know, you, nobody wants to really talk, sit there for an hour about the housing elements, it's all about what it really means, and so what we try to extract is, what are the priorities for the city? So, the majority of people indicated that they wanted to see more housing for lower and moderate-income households, and an emphasis on, on fair housing services, and the individuals working in the service industry, or those who are at risk, or are chronically homeless, are those that people felt merited the most attention, and, and something like an inclusionary housing fee, perhaps citywide, was brought up, as well as a greater emphasis on either converting uses, or rehabbing uses to create more transitional or supportive or emergency housing. So now, I'm going to talk to you about the new housing programs and some of the draft recommendations we have. There are six categories, I'm not going, I'll, I'll go through each category as we go along in the presentation, but I'm just going to highlight, this is most of the programs that we're going to have in the housing element, I'm not going through the ones that are just adherent state law, and, and, you know, not really controversial, just kind of matter-of-fact housekeeping type things, but these are some of the key changes in new programs. So the first category is making sure that the city has enough sites for its new housing need, and a variety of housing types. So there's one program that looks at monitoring, just looking at that land inventory and making sure that if you ever start to fall short, you're going to start to identify additional or alternative sites. And with density bonus and ADUs, there, that is just kind of some housekeeping, updating the ordinance to comply with state law, but really looking at the city's tools to encourage and facilitate affordable housing, density bonus probably plays a big role, and so encouraging the use of density bonus, incentivizing development, making sure they're aware of state law, and, and also facilitating the production of, of ADUs. Those, those two areas where the city has an opportunity to facilitate more affordable housing. Then, there's the alternative sites option, so, I won't get into the, the gory details, but basically you can think of your RENA, you have a 231-unit lower-income RENA, about 50 of those, 50 to 55 of those units, you can get in credit if you do like you did with Silver Lantern, and take the units that were either not residential, they're, so they're not units, they're a hotel or something like that, or take market-rate units and preserve them as affordable housing. The key thing to make sure the city gets credit this time around is, we have a program, we have this program and another program to tie in, so that makes sure we cover the city's bases, and the, you'll get RENA credit if the city enters into an agreement by October 2024, and then it's occupied within two years of the agreement, whenever, whenever that happens, so if you enter into agreement 2023, that deadline's 2025. So we're not putting in there that you're going to go do this, we're going to say you need to explore, look at sites, talk about with partners, see if there's adequate funds, and if there's adequate funds and partners and sites, then you should do it, and generate some more housing that way. So then, in the second category, this is assisting in the provision of affordable housing, not through site development, but in, and usually in funding mechanisms. So there's the housing initiative program that the city already has, and so continuing to do that, but then evaluating the feasibility of extending that program to new hotels. Just, and again, that's the level of commitment we're providing for the city right now, we take this to the state, we try and provide the maximum flexibility for the city as much as possible, and then we see where the, the state kind of hammers down and says we want to see more commitment, but generally on something like that the city's already doing, I think the, the state is a little bit more forgiving. And then, in the in-lug fee, we know that the city judiciously applies it on a case-by-case base, basis, and, and, as required in the Mellow Act, and there has been, this was probably our number-one issue brought up in the public outreach efforts, and so looking at the feasibility of expanding the, the application of in-lug fees for all new development citywide, or for certain types of development. The city joined as a founding member of the Orange County Housing Trust, the county is getting SB2 funding through the, the REAP funding from the state to provide some documentation, so hopefully that continues to gain momentum, and, and it's in this vehicle that the city can advocate on behalf of its residents, on the citing of potential affordable housing sites or emergency shelter, and kind of leverage the resources on a countywide level to generate more affordable housing or emergency housing, and especially in, in the South County. The third category is about taking away the red tape, really, making projects more feasible, while balancing the interests of the public, and making sure we don't, you know, throw the baby out with the bathwater and end up with one problem switching it out for another. But the city has that parking implementation plan that it, that it prepared and finalized in 2019, and so this is just kind of a, a little bit of a housekeeping, but making sure, because parking is, is an issue in the city, that you update the plan as necessary, and make sure that you understand the parking standards and whether or not anything needs to change. Then there's the additional streamlining, so this is that you might hear referred to as SB 35, Senate Bill 35, it's where you have, again, those 231 lower-income units, and in general, you should be on pace for about 29 a year to permit or be built. Now, it's not the city's job to go build housing, but if the development interest, industry and the property owners are not cooperating to build that housing, or to bring it forth to you to get permitted, then the state says, okay, we will reduce the red tape even more by saying that certain types of projects that include 50% or more affordable housing, so this is not just any housing project, and they have two or more units, and they're consistent with the current zoning and general plan, there's, there's a lot of other conditions, those go through as ministerial, and you can apply objective development design standards if you want as well. And then, for, for above moderate-income housing or market-rate housing, if you're not producing as much of those, and that's, I think, at about 25 a year or so, which I don't think the, that's, that's not going to be the city's problem, but then, projects with 10% or more affordable housing get this treatment. So generally, I'd say you're, you're not going to have to worry about the 10%, it's really that 50% number where if you're not getting enough lower-income housing production, certain projects are going to get streamlined. And then, on supportive housing, this was a law that changed, where supportive housing has to be allowed by right in zones where multifamily or mixed uses are permitted. And then, the low-barrier navigation centers, I kind of brought this up a little, the last time here, those are, those are, think about emergency shelters that people really would want to use, so a lot of times, people go, they're reluctant to go to emergency shelters because they're not allowed to bring their dog, they're not allowed to store their things besides a backpack, they're, they're a little bit fearful, they can't bring their kids, or something like that. These are barriers, these are centers that try to remove those barriers, that's the low-barrier name, and so those uses by state law must be permitted by right in zones that allow mixed use, or non-residential zones that permit multifamily housing. That fourth category is, is about conserving your existing housing stock, it's not the deed restricted, it's anything that is just currently affordable. And so, this is a lot of rehab, because once projects kind of go far afield on their quality, then the property owner sometimes tends to just shutter the whole thing, build a new, so if you can help projects stay in good condition, still at an affordable rate, their, their current rates, then that helps preserve the housing stock that's currently available to people. So that's really about focusing, the change there is about focusing your renter or owner rehab efforts into areas that are called low-resource areas, and I'll show you a map a little bit later on, but this is where the fair housing law, the AB 686, kind of comes in, it's, wants to be in almost all of your programs to the degree possible, so this is how we're tweaking some of the programs to say, not just citywide, whoever kind of first comes first cur, first serve and low income, there's, kind of the eastern part of the city you'll see is considered a low-resource area, and I'll explain that in a little bit. Can you go back one more? Oh, yeah, that extends to code enforcement as well. So then, the fifth category, that's where you're talking about income restricted, so something that's formally preserved. Luckily, this, the city has been doing a really good job in preserving, making sure the housing units are preserved in perpetuity, and so there's just a policy that we added to encourage that, that practice to continue as much as possible. And then, that last category is, is fair housing, so this is, the state's putting a, a big emphasis on it, this is going to be the really big, this is, this is not quite as big as RENA, but this is going to be just as tricky for some jurisdictions, just to prepare, this is something where jurisdictions, many jurisdictions already had to prepare fair housing assessments or analysis of impediments to fair housing, this says, okay, every jurisdiction has to do it in their housing element, and you have to look at how the land inventory relates to where you already have concentrations of poverty or ethnicity, and then identify actions that help further fair housing. So some of those three bullets there are just a sample of some actions that the city could consider, some are very easy, continue to work with Fair Housing Council in Orange County, that's something, because the city contracts with it, so you're not going to set up your own council, it'd be inefficient, that targeting rehabilitation efforts in low-resource centers, that's again about kind of price. that's again about kind of prioritizing so that people who are going to be at a disadvantage aren't further at a disadvantage. And then the third one there about really getting perspectives from all of the, the spectrum of, of Dana Point and targeting those who might not have a voice and making sure that they can help influence how policy or how program activities occur. So this is, this is the map. So there's TCACs, some of you may be familiar with it. It's the, the Tax Credit Allocation Committee. So you might also hear of them of 9% tax credits, 4% tax credits. Basically, the state says, hey, we're going to try and incentivize affordable housing and we're going to give these tax credits out. And the 9%, which is you get 9% tax credit, is really competitive. They don't have a lot of funds and they just, they get eaten up like that. The 4% get eaten up with, like that. I mean, they're still, they'll still get eaten up real fast. And so the, the Tax Credit Allocation Committee says, well, we need to come up with criteria for how to score these applications that come with us and whether or not they're helping certain areas. And we, we would like to give more money and more tax credits to areas that are in, kind of in a disadvantage. So they compile up 20 to 30 different factors, like the ones there that are listed, access to transit, access to high-performance schools, whether or not people are overpaying, looking at income categories, a, a variety of factors. And then it uses census tracts and, and other geographic units to kind of break up the, the state. And so nobody really thinks of low resource when they think of Dana Point. But from a tax credit perspective, the eastern part of the city in general has less access to those resources and has more issues with overpayment. It has the lower income population in, in the city. And so what, the, the one aspect of AB 686 is to look at the land inventory. And you ideally don't want kind of what we have a little bit, which is that the housing sites are in the low resource area. But, you know, the state lobs over the huge RENA. So, you know, they can't kind of satisfy two goals that are at odds with each other a little bit. So they know that this is, the state knows, okay, jurisdictions are going to do what they can. How we have kind of mitigated some of this is that ADU focus, offering about 80 ADUs that probably are going to actually take place mostly in the northwestern part of, of the city. Have the kind of the single-family homes that have the, the best chance of doing it. Although it does say it couldn't occur, there's plenty of opportunity in the eastern side of the city. But we are spreading it out a little bit through that. And then just trying to see if there's any ways that we can focus the investments either of the county using federal dollars or the city using code enforcement or service providers and trying to get them to take actions that improve services in those areas.
Can I ask you one quick question, just so I know what I'm looking at? When you look at this map, if I'm, if I'm, you know, applying for tax credits, do I want high resource or low resource?
Yeah, that, so you've hit upon the inconsistency between the land inventory not being put in the low resource identif, ideally, and the state, on the other hand, saying, yeah, but from a tax credit standpoint, we'll give you more points if you're in a low resource area in some cases. In, it, it, in other cases, they, it, it kind of varies. They just, they'll give you more points. But in general, it's because you might be improving some of those resources. So that's, that's their ideal goal, is that you're, you're helping to bring something to those areas.
Okay, so if you're in, if you're in a face-off with another developer and you're in a low and they're in a moderate, you, you get more points and you get the tax credits, basically?
Yeah. So that's, that's the quick snippet on the programs. I can go through a couple of slides on, on next steps. So we're, we're kind of wrapping up the outreach, 5th of June. And, and the council in the middle of June will kind of be it. Although we'll still obviously take public comments and we'll still have the adoption hearings. And then we're going to be submitting the housing element to the state for their review. And then the safety element, we'll go to CAL FIRE. We've already kind of been in communication with them and then we anticipate coming back in the fall. So then there's the last slide, it's just, if there's, you know, people looking at this who don't know, so you know all of this. Other than that, I will turn it back to staff and be available for questions.
Great, thanks Colin. Questions? Vice Chair Donor.
Yes. When you were talking about the housing inclu, inclusion housing fees and city fees in coastal zones, are we collecting them as a city and then passing that on to organizations that support?
I'll defer to staff on how you're doing it existing right now and I'll talk about future if you want.
So the city currently has a housing in-lu program. And it is applicable to certain projects. For example, the Strands at Headlands collects a fee for affordable housing as part of their approval of the original coastal development permit process. And so the city maintains a, a fund of money to be used towards either rehabilitation or the construction of, of new units. There are other specific projects as well. For example, the Monarch Beach Resort specific plan collects a nominal fee for new development. And that has been in place for quite some time. So there's certain projects where an in-lu fee program has been initiated throughout the city.
So do we use that money to subsidize the existing organizations and specific projects? Or do we use that money to actually purchase some properties?
So we do have a, a pot of money. I don't think we've spent any of it, to be honest with you. And so we've looked at, in this past cycle, in the fifth cycle, to rehabilitate potentially the existing housing units on Domingo that are deed restricted. So we've been in contact with that property owner, the 24 units down in Doheny Village, to put towards that, those funds that we have towards potential rehabilitation. So we've investigated potential ideas on how to spend that, but we haven't spent that pot of money quite yet.
And, and what does the parking standards have to do? I mean, are we reducing this, I mean, saying you don't have to have parking?
So the city had gone through an effort to establish the citywide parking implementation plan. A component of that was to look at existing parking standards. A component of that, for example, was the Doheny Village Plan parking, which does call out for reductions for residential development, as an example. So compared to the current parking standard and in a way acts as a incentive for housing development. So that's one example of how the parking implementation plan alleviates some of the impediments to development of housing.
Any other questions?
If you first, so Senate Bill 35, right now you're talking about 29, like low, low, and 25 a goal for moderate. So to date, it's been a goal. At some point in time, are, is, is the government or the state looking to make that a requirement, impose, you know, fees if you don't meet it? What's, what's that looking like? Because it's harder and harder to develop in the state.
So I haven't seen even any kind of legislation that's kind of tossed a spaghetti against the wall that would, that would go towards making anything a mandate. There's obviously certain interest groups who would like to, to do that. But the, the only penalty you have that kind of even comes close to that is if you're refusing to zone the properties to potentially accommodate the, the RENA allocation. That's where the state says, okay, now you can, you can be subject to some punitive and monetary problems. So otherwise, the city's only obligation, aside from, you know, passing the smell test of being fair and working on, on, you know, helping to facilitate affordable housing, is to adequately keep enough sites zoned. The SB 35 was an effort to kind of hit at the above moderate or the market rate and at the low end and say, okay, we're not seeing a lot of even market rate housing going through. So when we know we need affordable housing, but we're hearing from some jurisdictions that it, and from development community, that it's hard to do any sort of development. And so we're going to make it so that there's no more, you know, NIMBY concerns, there's no more SEQUA concerns on certain types of projects that are market rate above moderate. As long as they include some sort of public benefit, they have some sort of affordable housing. And then at the other end, it's really, that's the strongest you see in terms of, okay, if for some reason people can't get affordable housing through, you know, 50% to 100%, we're going to make it so that if the production's not happening in the city, then we're going to help it happen even more. But the city doesn't still, still, the city's not on the hook for any punitive damages if nobody, if the property owners all sit on their hands and say, I don't want to do anything, and the development community says, I don't want to come there, then the state just keeps asking harder and harder questions about, well, what else can you do to do it? You know, so that's, that's as far as it goes.
All right, thinking, then one last question. And the youth commission survey, was that geared towards a certain age range? Or what was that? Because it's just, there were people, because the answers were like, living in Dana Point, working in Dana Point. But it's like, are they living in Dana Point in their home? Are they living with their parents or?
I, I think we factored in the, because the, the youth workshop, youth board workshop, had a kind of a, about two-thirds of the questions of the surveys. It didn't have some of those that they, they probably wouldn't be interested in. And I can't, I'm trying to remember, I think we asked the demographic data, but I think they all live in, in Dana Point. And so there were, I think there were about six surveys we got from there. And then all of the rest were.
But again, was it age range of people that would be renting or?
Oh, no, it was, it was just an attempt to get input from, there were high school, I believe, students. So they're theoretically entering the time where, you know, I think for most of them, they're probably going to go to college, but they're, you know, might be trying to enter the housing area.
All right, I just was curious how it fit in with, are they renting? Or are they owning? Or, or what are they doing? Because they should be living at home.
Yes, I'm pretty sure they are.
Anybody else? All right, I've got a couple of things here. So on the, the, you talked about fee waivers. I was actually trying to find in here what our fees are. Do you happen to know off the top of your head what the waiver, what, what a, somebody walked in here with, let's say, a 10-plex and they wanted to provide some affordable, what type of a fee waiver they could get?
I, I will, I'm pretty sure staff will know that better than I will.
So the fee waiver is basically in two components. So for the example that you had given, it would be a discount based on the number of very low or low income units that are provided at the property. So for example, if there was 100 units total and 10 were to be proposed as very low, then there would be a 10% reduction in building, planning, any city-related fees. It wouldn't be applicable to any outside development.
Okay, and that's processing fees, right?
Correct.
Not diff or any other type of like impact fees?
Correct.
And I know, talked inclusionary, so I just want to make sure I'm understanding. We're not proposing that we, in, in our current formula, we're expanding or implementing a fee program or anything, are we?
Right, what we have, the language we have in there is, is that the city will evaluate the feasibility of, of doing it.
You know, I think it'll be interesting, I know this is a probably off topic, but how SB 9 shakes out here in the next two weeks? Because it could effectively, you know, unleash the hounds on duplexes and, is that something we would be able to pivot and be prepared to address in this current?
It's, it's, there's, there's about 17 different pieces of legislation on housing at any given week.
Right.
And so it's, we can look into, at, seeing if the city, what it would do for SB 9 if it starts to get enough traction.
Gotcha, yeah, okay. And then on the Mellow Act, you know, I'm aware a little bit of it, but I'd love to have a little refresher if, if you can on, is, is it a fee that they require or is it a onsite mandate?
I'll, I'll go ahead and take a risk here. The staff could probably correct me. Let's see if I, if I read right. My, my understanding of it is that the Mellow Act encourages, or is it kind of encourage, kind of requires it, affordable housing to be provided as feasible? So there's this, all these kind of words in there that make it, that at the end, it's kind of, you don't have to do it, but the jurisdictions are supposed to really, really encourage it.
Got it, so it's sort of like our, our affordable accommodations where the coastal development, they won't give us guidance, but they'll appeal something if they don't like what we do?
Correct, and so historically, in past projects, it has been the Coastal Commission's requirements to uphold the Mellow Act. And so the various projects that have incorporated either a in-lu or some kind of affordable housing component has been a requirement of the coastal development permit of a project.
I think that's it. I think, you know, I would just say that I, I am, would be very hesitant to move forward with any type of mandates around affordable housing fees or below market rate requirements. And, and one reason is if you just look at the Victoria Project, it's what, 365 units, 15%. So we get 55, 54 below market rate units. In order to hit our obligation, that means we need 10 Victoria Projects, which I think would be a way to gaslight the city. I think anybody that, that would see that as a responsible development would be questioning it. And, you know, I don't see that many types of projects ever moving forward. So we get into this sort of conundrum. I think SB 35 is an example of how below market rate mandates sort of fail because SB 35 has been around for several years. Not a lot of people have taken advantage of it. That's because it has a high, extremely high cost. And, you know, any cost that, that goes towards housing, you know, my experience has been those costs are going to get absorbed by the buyers, the renters and the developers. And at some point, that slows or, you know, cavitates development to almost zero. It happened in Santa Ana for about five years, where not one permit was pulled when they enacted a, what was it? A tripling of their in-lu fee. So, you know, I say that only just as my perception or my, my, at least my take on it is that, you know, helping development, i.e. waivers, I think is the first approach. I, I mean, I think looking at even timelines and saying, if you'll agree to, you know, a certain level of affordability, we'll have this project reviewed and done in a day or two, you know. Those are the things, you know, when, when I talk to developers, time is money and certainty is, is critical. And while they may pay a fee, there is a, a point where that fee becomes miserable and, and undoable. But then it also becomes a barrier. And I don't want to see us become that place. I'd like to be more creative than just, you know, requiring a fee. That being said, I do think, you know, when developers come in here, when there's policy decisions, i.e. the Victoria Project, is the opportunity for us to ask for things that are important to this community. One of those can be fees, but that's a choice that those developers get to make. And I think making it a mandate just becomes, you know, a barrier that I'm certainly not in favor of and, and wouldn't support unless it had a bunch of other positive things attached to it. So that's my comments. Otherwise, everything looks good and look forward to seeing things get wrapped up here in the near future. Not taking action tonight, right? Just receiving file? Perfect. All right, well then that moves us on to new business. I don't believe we have any new business. Is that correct? Correct. Staff reports.
None tonight, thank you.
Commissioner comments. Nobody? Okay, I've got one. I think it's June, God, is it the 14th? So we, the city of Dana Point sponsors, I think we sponsored the regiment for the Marines. And their golf tournament is coming up on the 14th of June. And they need help. So anybody that's interested in helping, you can either reach out to me, I can give you their contact or forward you the email that they sent. But they need help on the course during the day with all kinds of different stuff. And be a great way to give back and if you're interested. So that's all I have. With that, I'll go ahead and adjourn tonight's meeting.